I did, I just never got it.
Yeah, if you just send me whatever your original contract was.
Cause there were some things that I saw years ago that you guys wanted to change. We would like to bear fruit.
Okay, okay, yeah, that works.
That is perfectly fine. I just didn't want to change everything from.
Yeah, we went each student in.
Would have been Friday and Thursday. So I spiked. But.
Well, that's a very nice question.
This.
I call that young man, maybe not for.
Just two. They're probably the only one that can get out. So three thousand. They knocked down. Our. And I'm sorry, getting on the bench. Your show is like.
Somebody want to.
I'd like to. And then.
They might have, they might have to start that and he was going to funeral home. Yeah, I don't know. He didn't say. He just told Joe and I when he was going. The funeral. I don't.
It's so fun.
I just that they were no good.
Yeah, then go along.
It was a big one.
Right? So the. I don't know.
They said. He's saying. She obviously. He just.
He was.
He was. He went by. Those words are pretty old, but.
Yeah, I wish we could study about that. But now. Should we start without Steve?
Yeah.
It's really up to. The remaining commissioners, yeah, you guys won't start.
We waited up to five.
Yeah.
So I could just get to the side.
I was cheering.
Yeah.
He's walking in the door.
What about? Tell some action. So I see. So. I should never have done that. Did you think I was a little bit balding now?
I just.
I just want. There's many times where I've tried to start right at ten. Yeah, it's better. I mean, it's. You so much for.
Yeah, I've said many times, I appreciate that. That's very, very. Dollars.
Yes.
That is. That wasn't. Yeah.
Your.
Oh, you're all scared.
Steve.
Yeah.
And. Why didn't they look? Because. We should do it. Something. About. Evolution. And what we not. Ten years. Okay. For some. Okay. If you want to raise chair. My. I know. Man.
Welcome to our Tuesday, November twenty fifth meeting. If you'll stand and join me in the pledge and a short prayer. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Heavenly Father, once again, we gather to conduct the county business. We humbly ask for your guidance and wisdom in all that we do. Watch off over us and everything that we may be used for the good in your name, we pray. Amen. Have the commissioners had an opportunity to review the minutes previous meeting? If so, do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion has been made in second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries three zero. Have the commissioners had an opportunity to review the claims? And so do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion is made in second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries three zero. Have the commissioners had an opportunity to review the payroll?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion has been made in second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries three zero. Uh, next up. We have the final decision by them beacon of Newcastle. Uh, form your final decision been issued. If they are permit reference above. Uh, beacon, you receiving this notice because you are to be on item's official notification list. And information purposes only. Be entered in. And then. Duke Energy. This is also informational herbicide treatment notice to since we are landowners. They are committed to providing reliable electric service. Reporting a vegetation management to help keep power lines clear of trees, brush and other vines that interrupt service. Notifying us that they are going to be doing that work in our area. Next, we have the clerks monthly report. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion has been made in seconded to accept clerk's report. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries three zero. Next, we have the treasurer's report.
Motion to accept.
Second.
Motion made in seconded. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries three zero. Next up, we have the weights and measures report from October to November fifteenth. Do I have a motion?
Motion to accept.
Second.
Motion has been made in second. It all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries three zero. Do I see anybody from EDC? Okay, chamber. I don't see Josh Estor. Well, that's gonna be quick. Angela. Don't see her. Mr. Clark. Well. Highway Department. Uh, I'm going to make a motion. We are not opening bids today. Uh, it's come to my attention after reviewing emails and getting some complaints. The bid packets were not made available on the uh, date. And we're not given out until the seventeenth. So I don't think it's fair for the people who I got complaints from that were unable to bid. So I would like to extend that deadline to allow them time to get bids turned in. So I would like to make that in form of a motion.
To extend it to when?
We can. It doesn't matter if we open it another five days or we do it next meeting. Would it make a difference, Joel?
I don't think so, no.
So it's up to you guys how you want to do that. If you want to just extend another five days and call for a special meeting to open it. Or we just wait and open it at our December meeting.
Wait and open until our December meeting would be my suggestion.
Is that a motion?
Make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion has been made in second to postpone opening of the bids until our December meeting. Give everyone who was trying to get in to allow them time to do so. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries three zero.
So if somebody comes in and wants their bid back, we can give it back to them or do we keep the bids we have? How does that work?
I think you can keep the bids that you have. Now, somebody, I suppose if it's unopened, they could take it back if they now have additional time to submit.
There's nothing opened.
Yeah, so I think you could if someone came in and then if a bidder came in and wanted their package back to resubmit by new date, you can do that.
I'll say there was some confusion in the emails. I don't know what it was, but the they were supposed to got them on the twelfth. They weren't available until the seventeen as far as the actual packets. So.
When is the new due date? Nick, by the next meeting or?
By the next meeting. I'll say I don't have a problem extending it five days because that would have been the same timeframe, but it's with the holidays and everything, we're not going to be able to do it unless we call a special meeting afterwards. So we won't open them until the seventeenth. So I guess do we just extend the timeframe, the additional five days, not counting holidays and weekend? For them to submit.
I suppose my question would be, would you communicate that then to everybody that's? I mean, that's that would be my only question. You have a knowledge of everyone that's.
I know of two to three of them that have said they they didn't get it in a timely manner or weren't sure they were going to be able to get a bid turned in.
We have all, we have. I think everybody's names on the outside of the envelopes that submitted.
Okay.
So do we need to re-advertise then?
Do you think we should?
I think you probably should. Then I'm okay with that. To be close with the seventeenth by the time you advertise, if you want to set a date earlier than seventeenth, certainly you could do.
I'll say we gotta have a special meeting if it's earlier, but I don't have a problem waiting till the seventeenth if that doesn't affect anything else.
Regular bid, you know, is seven days between and then seven days to.
Yeah.
Due date. So. Should we just make it the next month sometime?
You're right with getting multiple publications. That may be tricky.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Cause we do it then by the seventeenth.
Have it in at least a week and a half before.
Yeah.
Little town news. So.
So it's gonna be tough to meet those deadlines. If you want to set it first meeting in January, would that be enough time, you think?
Um.
To get them next.
Just have more meeting next month.
Yeah, seventeenth is the only meeting we have in December.
Yeah. All of that, that's, yeah, that's gonna be.
Yeah.
Your advertisement's in.
So our first meeting in January.
Unless you have a special meeting.
Does that mess up any of the?
We would just if if they're the bids are due on the first meeting in January, then we would take them under advisement and we would not. Per se, accept any bids until the second meeting in January.
Okay.
Because of the amount of bids and the amount of numbers that we have to look at. So.
Most like normally I know we take them under advisement. I just had several calls, people saying they couldn't get packets until the seventeenth and they didn't have enough time to get a bid put together. So. I thought if they didn't get it till the seventeenth and they're supposed to got it by the twelfth and it wasn't available, that we needed to make accommodations for that. That's the reason I'm doing it. So. Just so everybody knows what's going on.
Okay.
So do I have a motion to open the bids first meeting in January?
So moved.
Second.
Motion has been made in second to open the bids for the highway, uh, first meeting in January.
It'd be January the fourteenth.
January the fourteenth. Anything else?
Yeah. Better late application is now open for um, funding. It's uh, we've got two bridges, bridge one fifteen. Which is on four hundred south east of one oh three and bridge one forty three, which is on two hundred south east of one oh three. Uh, I have the applicant or the financial commitment letters here. I need signatures to be able to uh, to submit it. Uh, deadline is the December fifth. So I have to have it in by the end of the day on December fifth. You have copies or do you need copies?
Got copies.
Got it. Okay. So I need, I need your approval and signature.
Make a motion to accept.
Second.
Motion has been made in second. It all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries three zero.
Thank you.
You want to wait and sign those at the end of the meeting?
That's fine.
Mr. Rust here. Mr. Green. Mr. Pierce, do you have anything? Debbie.
I just have the uh. Letter to the from Hartman and Williams to help us with our capital assets. The only thing on the agreement that changed was the uh, price went up a little bit. But they're the ones that helps us get all the bridges, roads, buildings. And everything on our capital asset list with the correct amounts and depreciation amounts. But we've had them for the last three years, I think. At least. Yeah, three or four years we've had them. The letters never changed. It stayed the same, just the amount went up.
You need an approval from us to accept?
Yep, you need to.
Make a motion to accept.
Second.
Motion is made in second. It all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, the other thing that I have that's I gave you guys a handout on, I forgot to give it to Heather. Um. The state has changed the way we do our dispersment for our CVA and FIT tax. See if it's the commercial vehicle excise tax and FITS financial institute tax. Used to be they told us how to disperse it to every city, town and the county. Now they've changed it. They still tell us how much to give to the city and towns. But the county is now has to figure out, do you want to come with the with the percentage to give to each one of the units under the county, which would be. County general reassessment, Cume Bridge, Health Department, Memorial Park, CCD, um, and then the debt payment for two bonds. Their amounts that they got last year was right around a thousand dollars is what they got. Um, the biggest one was um, the counties was over seven, uh, over about twenty five thousand or about thirty five thousand, I'm sorry. And then um. CCD was a large amount. What the state is suggesting that we do, instead of you guys coming up with at a percentage to disperse to these places. Is put it in county general because that's where most of the money spent from, then you can spend it any way that's legal. Um, you can do it all at once. You can do it in small amounts. We just have to track how you spend that fit money. It's right around fifty thousand dollars. I don't know. This year was still about fifty, wasn't it?
I think so. I don't remember off the top of my.
Yeah, but last year it was forty eight thousand. So it's right around fifty thousand dollars.
I prefer the idea of putting it in county general um, to decide later rather than setting up percentages now for each fund.
If you decide that you want it done as a percentage, we have to have that done in an ordinance by June first. Cause instead of it going out in settlement, now we do it June first and December first. I brought Kelly in case you guys had questions. She knows way more about it than I do.
So.
So I I would make a motion that we put the entire amount in the general fund to be used later for any legally correct reason.
I second.
Our motion is second to put it in county general. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries three zero. Is that all you've got? Okay. I don't see clerks. Memorial Park. It's gonna be you or Tom coming up, so.
My hearing beginning. Thank you.
So. Mostly I just wanted to update the board um, about uh, two projects that have been uh, completed or at least about to be completed tomorrow. Uh, the lift station, uh, I know that was a while ago. It was on the fritz, but we installed one of the pumps. Um. I don't know if it's today or tomorrow because they said that they were flipping on which day they could come. Uh, but either today or tomorrow, they're going to install the second pump and then we're done. Uh, just needed. To upkeep on regular maintenance, like me going out there and checking and make sure it's it's working. Okay. Um, I might maybe try to like switch which ones are actually doing most of the work just to keep it level, which. Think that would be a good idea. And then uh, another thing is at least the planned stuff that we had for this year when it comes to roads have been finished. Um, so I know that was a kind of a big complaint that we had for a while and I think that they're 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 good. They're good for now. Uh, we'll have to definitely come up with a plan to uh. Um. Fix them more in the future just because it's still rough in some areas, but we did what we could with the money that we had and I think they're looking at least better. So. Um, then the third thing was um. Christmas in the park is uh, December thirteenth. Um. I'd love to have everybody come on out to it. Um, it's ten AM to four PM for like the the Santa's gift shop where we're gonna have a lot of the vendors. And then uh, at six PM is when like Santa will be there and a lot of the other events as well. Um, we'll have lights throughout the park. Um, I know that that was my favorite part was driving throughout the park with the Christmas lights every year. So. Um, also I wanted to invite anybody um, through the crowd as well um, to come out and decorate one of the shelters. Um, we had a couple of people already do that and. Honestly, uh, my grounds crew has been amazing because they've donated a lot of their own lights to to the park to uh, in including my family as well to decorate the uh, shelters. Um, I would love to have as many people come out as possible because I think it it's gonna be great. So. Um. But yeah, other than that, that's really all I have. Um, if there's any questions, I'd love to answer some, but.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you.
Somebody from the assessors. Coroner's office. Was anybody from weights and measures? Mr. True. EMS. Treasurer. Hello, Inspector Troy.
Good, thank you.
That's gonna go easy then. Probation. Community correction. So we're down to that. Next up. Have the piney service agreement. For the Justice Center. If you got a chance to review. Costs coming in for their contract for twenty four thousand two hundred and sixteen. Uh, last agreement was about. Made on this month uh, last year, so. Do I have a motion to accept or not on this?
The contract price approximately the same as it was last year.
Debbie, you remember what it was last year?
Was it close to the same contract price or is it a significant jump? Okay. Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion's made in second to approve piney contract for next year. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries three zero. Next up, we have a bond for Lisa Lovelace. And Bill Upchurch. Do I have a motion to approve those bonds?
Make a motion to approve the bonds.
Second.
Motion has been made in second to approve both bonds. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I'm not hearing you, Susan.
I'm talking right into this mic, but maybe not well enough. I'll try better.
Motion carries three zero. Uh, Mr. Coger. Are you here? Well, I guess we won't speak on that then. Next up, we have a. Ordinance. Twenty twenty five dash eleven dash twenty five zero zero three flood damage. twenty twenty-five dash eleven dash twenty-five zero zero three flood damage prevention ordinance. Does anyone here to speak on that? See, you aren't gonna get away without being up here.
That is a proposed ordinance. Uh, every five, six years FEMA comes out with a list of things they want to change. Most of the things that we've changed in the past were already in their previous list, so we didn't have to change much. But this changes quite a bit. There were a dozen or so, I think, items that they recommended. They those come to FEMA, sends them to DNR. We do a new resolution making those changes and it goes back to DNR.
And I believe this is required in order-
It is a required ordinance, yes. Yep, it is.
Insurance program to adopt standards at least in conformance with this.
Have you had an opportunity to review this?
I have, yeah.
Nothing that jumped out?
No, I mean, it's it's pretty technical and requirements. As to how you have to build things within a flood hazard area and what has to be done if you rebuild within a flood hazard area.
But there was nothing that made you cringe?
No.
Okay, that's what I needed to know.
And even if there were, the alternative would be to not participate in the flood hazard insurance program.
Wish that doesn't work very well.
So yeah, there's not really a good alternative.
Well, at least we could complain though, so.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash eleven dash two five zero zero three. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries three zero.
Thank you.
You're quite welcome. Do we have anything from the public? Going once? Twice? Motion to adjourn.
No, something from the board. You forgot me again.
Oh, my gosh, you're part of the public. Say something.
Okay, um, well, something that I wanted to talk about today was a path forward for the, um, data center vote that the commissioners will need to take up. Um, ninety days from the planning commission meeting would put us on February the eighteenth. And the commissioners need to address, um, the data center recommendation by February eighteenth, or the planning commission vote will become valid at that point. So I wanted to, I think there's a couple of things we need to talk about. We have an option of holding a public hearing as a board. So I think we need to, um, decide if we're going to hold a public hearing and choose a date so that the public knows what to expect. And, um, I personally would also like to hold a few work sessions leading up to that point, so that we have an opportunity as a board of commissioners to discuss the project. So I'll go ahead and put out what I'm thinking about it. Um, so just to start the discussion, but I would like to see us take up a public hearing by January the nineteenth, which is sixty days from the planning commission recommendation. And prior to January nineteenth, hold two commissioner work sessions to discuss the different aspects of the project.
Joel, I'd like you to weigh in on this.
I mean, these are all things you certainly can do. I mean, there's nothing that would prohibit you from doing it.
I just wanted to make sure that if we're we've not done this prior to, how much pushback are we gonna get from things that we have approved without doing this in the past? And where does that put us legally?
Well, I mean, legally, it's your choice to, I mean, you could consider this, the ninety days is the timeframe you have, and you could consider it at meetings every day from now in that ninety day timeframe. So legally speaking, you can hold more than one meeting with the subject, you can on the subject, and you can but are not required to have public comment on it. With past projects, I mean, certainly, I guess, from a purely legal standpoint, the time for anyone to legally object to that would have probably been long over. Now, you may have people that are upset that you're now taking this step now, but that's something that you have to deal with on a case by case basis. But but legally speaking, you could conduct meetings on this subject every day between now and the end of February, roughly.
You don't think that's gonna put us at odds with something since we haven't done it in the past?
I don't think so.
Okay. So that was my biggest concern with this going forward, is we're gonna get a lot of pushback from that we hadn't done it in the past, because normally on a zoning, once it comes to us, we don't have public hearings on regular zoning.
Sure.
So and since none of us have seen this new ordinance yet, I don't know what all is in it yet, so I can't make a comment one way or the other, other than what was talked about at the planning and zoning meeting. So.
I I think that being intentional about the timing is really important, because this is a tricky time of year. Um, this is Thanksgiving week. Next week, we have commissioners conference. We come back, we have a couple of weeks before Christmas. And so it is a very complicated time of the year for the commissioners to have a lot of time to investigate and research and have conversation, which needs to be done publicly, and then have time to hold a public hearing. And we want to make sure we have enough time there at the public hearing that it doesn't just not get done. And then the ninety days becomes effective and we haven't had opportunity to, um, to vote then. So I would make a motion that we, um, hold the public hearing the week of January the nineteenth with two work sessions prior.
Mr. Green, do you have an approximate timeframe of when the commissioners may have the PUD in front of us?
Scheduled meeting in the commission.
You think we would have it by the seventeenth?
Oh, so Joel and I have to talk about some points that were brought up.
Steve, what did you say?
I asked when we thought we would have the PUD in front of us, because I definitely want to have to have time after we get it to be able to look it over to see if there's any things that either we're not actually in it that we thought were in it, or things that were omitted, or things that we want to change, or we want to add to. I believe that's all right, isn't it?
So why would that not be available now?
As to how we address those, if we address those as an addendum to the PUD, or if we need to change some wording within the PUD, or if it is a separate time when it's out, the things that are approved and-
So Joel, how does that impact our timing? Because if that gets stuck in a process that takes a period of time, then that constrains the commissioner's time to input.
Well, I would advise to be err on the side of caution and just assume that Thursday is the effective date of when things start.
Okay, so the twentieth was the effective date. November the twentieth was the effective date.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, the statute talks about date of certification and then, uh, I mean, I suppose you could say a later date, but then you you wouldn't want to vote outside that time period and have someone come in and say, well, you know, because you voted a different way than what the approval was, well, it became effective when you didn't vote.
Well, is the date of certification? The planning commission asks, uh, who passed on to it, that will then be certified by the commission?
It's the date from the planning commission taking action, so I would err on the side of caution and say that November twenty date is the one we assume starts the ninety day clock.
Okay, so the PUD is available now, but any addendums or changes that you make then are not necessarily available now? Right? Okay. And when's the next planning commission meeting? Are you just talking to Joel about it, or are you talking with the planning? You're just talking to Joel about it, okay? Gotcha.
There's that in the road when we actually-
So January the nineteenth is a Monday. And so that's a holiday. And our normal meeting would be the twenty-first. If we hold a public hearing, I've received several requests to have it in Knightstown at the gymnasium where there is enough room to hold whoever would like to come. Yeah.
I know that the capability, Jeff doesn't have equipment to move. Make sure it's where we can live stream it.
There's a TV and radio station at Knightstown.
We have to live stream it on our YouTube channel.
Is Jeff in here right now?
Had to go back to the courts.
Okay. It's, it is important to me as a priority that people be allowed to, or that we make it easy for people to participate in this process. One second. So I don't know exactly what that looks like, but I do know that last Thursday at the planning commission meeting is something that I personally disagreed with. People were not able to participate that wanted to. And so I don't want to see that repeated. Um, I also know that if we have a similar situation, that puts the sheriff's office in a difficult situation. They've been very gracious to let us use their conference room, but it became quite an event, and this could repeat itself as this process continues for the next ninety days. And so I think we need to consider what our options are for a different venue that is more open. I know I've been on the opposite side of this situation, and there was a perception that you're being purposefully excluded, even though that may or may not be correct. There's, I I want to be above reproach and trying to make it easy for people to come and have a venue where where that's handicapped accessible. I've gotten all kinds of comments. I don't know what we need to do if different, but I think it's important for us to discuss as a board that every requirement is made, but not just legally the requirement, but morally, we want people to be allowed to participate. Um, I don't personally, I mean, if you have something to add, but Steve.
Auditorium at Knightstown. That's the whole of your live streaming, and I would believe it's four hundred, six hundred. It's not as big as this man, but this is him doesn't work, the auditorium live.
And I I don't know if it does or not, but I think that finding out for sure, we can have, we could, if the board agrees, we could try to find out if we can livestream from the Knightstown gym, which is in the project area, which leaves plenty of room, and I'm assuming is handicap accessible as it's supposed to be, so. I think that I remember coming to meetings wanting an opportunity to be involved. And this is really not the best place to do that right now, even though it is, it's been necessary because of the courthouse remodeling, and it's been great up until this point, and I really appreciate the sheriff's department graciously sharing. But this is probably not the right place to continue this conversation, in my opinion.
I don't want to say anything in stone at this point. Do we have a chance to talk to IT to make sure that we can meet all the accommodations legally that we have to meet? But I guess I'm open to a motion if that's what your heart desires.
Well, separate it into separate motions then and and see what people think, but I make a motion that we hold um, a public hearing at the Knightstown, either gymnasium or auditorium, the week of January the nineteenth, pending whether or not our technology works to livestream.
Jeff says he could rig it like we Jeff says yes, as long as Brian or somebody's there.
Guess what she has got drafted on?
So I'll speak for Jeff a little bit. The technical aspects are gonna be, you know, microphones and things like that. All of these microphones are connected with all of the equipment in that cabinet. Same thing as where the meetings normally are at the courthouse, the company put in professionally. So all these cameras, microphones are connected to the livestream. If if you go somewhere else, you can have a meeting streamed, you're just not gonna be able to guarantee the quality or what someone's gonna hear. When the meeting was at the park, at the Smith Building, we still streamed it through here with a remote computer connected from there on Zoom. So you literally had a microphone that was on a portable camera, and that's all we had, and and that's probably gonna be what we're gonna have. You're gonna have a camera with a microphone built in, and it's gonna pick up what it picks up. So you're just not gonna be able to guarantee the quality when you're not somewhere that has microphones and professional equipment that connected in meant for streaming. So that's that's gonna be the limitations.
Right.
You can do it, just you're not gonna guarantee what you're gonna have.
Yeah. I think that that is actually really important, what you just said. Um, I'm trying to represent people as well as possible. And even though I do think that that will be unfortunate from both sides of this conversation, I think there's general consensus that a larger venue is important. So I still would prefer to see us go to the project area in a large venue where people won't be turned away, even though there may be a less clear audio. That that is unfortunate.
Yeah, I think we can definitely make it happen somehow. That'll just be the limitation is quality.
Can you talk about having it at the high school?
That's, I think that's been what I have heard.
Act them in about sporting events and if they'll even allow us to have it there.
I would, yeah. If that's what we vote to do. I had a few people contact me with statements they wanted entered into official comment, requesting a public hearing on the zoning change at the high school in Knightstown before a final vote is taken by the county commissioners. And then people are also requesting if, you know, the public meeting room that we are using now has limited capacity, doesn't have an overflow room, general public was locked out, which we all know was because of fire code. And that this is an issue that a lot of people want to be here for. And then the question of ADA compliance, again, and I don't know if it's valid or not, has been brought up to me by multiple people. And and like I said, I don't know, but this is, it was maybe hard for people to get to, is, yeah. And I've sent those to Joel so he can make a legal determination if there is any issue.
I hope this building is. We put a lot of money in it to make sure it was ADA compliant.
Well, just because the building is ADA compliant doesn't mean the route for these individuals was, and that, and again, I just don't know. And I'm not talking-
When I hear that this, that first accusations of this, the building, they are not ADA compliant, it is ADA compliant.
And I appreciate that. I'm just representing the people contacted me. I'm representing the people who contacted me. And I think, again, there there is a distinction between what is legally, or the bare minimum legal requirement, and then just being as accessible to the public as possible. And so I think that both things need to be considered.
So do I have a motion?
The the motion is to hold the public hearing the week of January nineteenth at the Knightstown Gymnasium or Auditorium, assuming we can get approval, scheduling, and to hold it in the evening.
I permitted to ask a question?
Yes, sir.
I'm looking at January twenty twenty-six calendar. Are we having a meeting on the fourteenth of January, which is the second Wednesday at eleven AM? Is that correct?
That's our normal commissioner meeting, yes.
And we're talking about having a meeting on the, on or about the week of January the nineteenth, which the nineteenth is Martin Luther King Day. So we're talking about having a meeting that week sometime for this public input about the proposed center, providing we get the information from the planning commission prior to that?
That's, I understand.
That all has to happen.
Yeah, to me, it makes more sense to go ahead and conduct normal business on the 14th and the 28th, I think would be our normal meetings. And to, especially if we're going to change the venue and to do the public hearing separately.
I have another question. There's, there's been mention of a 90 day timeframe from the date that the planning commission had their meeting to 90 days. Is that the window of opportunity that the commissioners have to respond to that?
Correct. It's from the date the planning commission made the decision. Not from the first hearing, or not from the first date it was considered, but from when the decision was made.
And they made the decision in November?
November 20th.
November the 20th.
And so 90 days is February the 18th.
Is February the right? Okay, I'm clear on the dates now.
Okay. I have a motion on the floor. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to have a public hearing the week of January 19th, depending on criteria of notifying Knightstown High School and their scheduling and having it of an evening. Do we have an approximate timeframe?
I would think six o'clock or seven o'clock to make sure that people, six o'clock. Be late. Yeah, six o'clock.
You're saying six? Five, six? What are you saying?
I would say six, personally.
I've got a motion and a second on the floor to have this meeting the week of January 19th, six o'clock, depending on the scheduling of Knightstown School for their auditorium or gym. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries three zero.
You're going to leave the in time open? You're not going to have an in time?
I, I personally would, but I think it all is.
Leave it open to go, okay. No, I'm just, I'm.
I would. Yeah, I, it's, it's up to all of us. You're right, yeah.
I make a motion, we have a two hour meeting advertised. That's my motion.
I have a motion to limit the timeframe to two hour, second.
I'll second it.
Motion's been made and seconded, limit length of the meeting to two hours. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries three zero.
And the next idea that I had mentioned before was having two work sessions leading up to the week of January 19th to walk through the PUD with our attorney, make sure we understand everything that's in it, talk about the pertinent issues of the project, make sure that we can have conversation and ask questions of each other. And not open for public input, but open for public viewing. Just so we can have discussion among the commissioner board. And I'll make that as a motion.
You're not setting dates for those, you're just wanting to have them somewhere between now and then, right?
Right, between now and the week of January 19th, prior to the public hearing.
I have a motion to have at least two work sessions prior to, between now and that meeting or hearing. Do I have a second? I'll second it, I guess. Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries three zero.
And so are we going to carry forward with the rest of our commissioner meetings in this building?
Did you say that again?
Are we going to carry forward then with the rest of our commissioner meetings as scheduled in this building?
In this room until through March.
Right.
But after today's meeting, it's probably open ended.
Yeah. Yeah. So I know that we communicated the best we could to people that we weren't going to be discussing the merits of the data center today. And so I guess we could. Are we going to not discuss the merits of the data center in the remaining commissioner meetings that are held here?
I would think if we're having a public hearing, I mean, how long are you going to keep doing this? We're going to meeting this thing until the next decade? Is that what we're going to do? Because at some point.
We have 90 days.
I know, but if we're going to, we're not going to keep doing this every meeting if you're having a public hearing to discuss these things and you're having work sessions to discuss these things, I don't see any reason for us to discuss it at every meeting that we have.
I don't either. I just want people to know what's, know what to expect. I just want to leave the meeting so people know at the regular business commissioner meetings, we will not be discussing the data center and we'll have them at the sheriff's office. Discussion of the data center would be limited to the work sessions and the public hearing where there'll be a larger venue. And then people feel like they are being heard and they have an opportunity to have, to participate. So that was my question was, do we feel like at these meetings here, our regular business, we're really not going to talk about the data center? We're going to do that at the public hearing?
That would be my suggestion because you're not going to, none of us in here, unless we start sending out our SVPs for every meeting that we have, knows how many people is going to show up at a meeting. So if you're going to make accommodations to have special meetings so everybody can attend, that's when that discussion should be held. If not, then you're going to have to change every meeting depends on who all our SVPs. And then what do you do if you have to rent a larger venue and you plan for 200 people and 25 show up? Then what do we do? Do we send everybody a bill for the cost of the meeting because we had to move it? Because I don't know how many people are going to show up. Most of these people don't know when they're, if they're going to show up, they have to work or whatever, they're going to be there. So if we're making accommodations to have special meetings, special timeframes to discuss the data center, that's when we should, in my opinion, we should do it. So.
Okay. So I can try to come up with some potential dates for work sessions where we could have access to Memorial Park, Smith Building. My brain shut down for a second.
You won't be able to hear your work sessions very well because they couldn't when you had that last meeting, when we have them there. I mean, I just want to make sure that you know that, that it's just.
I do. I understand that, yeah. I'm right now just representing people who have spoken to me. I feel like people want a bigger venue.
I understand that.
But you're right, then the audio is compromised. You're right, yeah.
No choice, they're deciding them whenever you guys need.
Right. Okay.
For the myself and what exactly is the work session? I was supposed to a hearing, all of this. Can you clarify that or that?
I want to give the legal description of a work session.
Well, what I would envision a work session would be just discussions between the commissioners and not the public being involved in it. Would just be the commissioners considering the issue and talking amongst themselves. And whereas a public hearing, it would be open up for anyone in the public to come and speak about the issue for a period of time.
So, and the public is invited to attend the work session.
Correct. Public can be there and observe. Typically, there's not, yeah.
That keeps us from violating the open door law if we meet, have, or having a meeting in private. That's why we have to have a public work session so that we can openly discuss without being violation of the open door law. Yeah, and there won't be any vote taken. It's all just discussion.
Does it have a different name for it in town, town?
I think so. I think just overwhelmingly, people want a larger venue, even though I do regret that the audio will not be as good. I think that is important, but just representing people who have spoken to me, they want a larger venue with easier parking. Yeah.
That will hinge on whether the Smith building is available and set up those times and dates. And you're okay with us getting notices out?
Sure, we can do all that.
So Susan, are you going to coordinate?
I am going to try to, I am. I'm going to try to coordinate two work sessions and coordinate with the school and then report back, yes.
Okay.
That shouldn't be a big of an issue. If it's just a work session, we're not trying to see the entire room and hear the public, hear you guys, I mean, the, the cameras should be able to be pretty easily. You guys and you guys to pick up.
Okay. Okay. Yeah. Okay, Steve, I'm done. Thank you.
That didn't need to be in the motion, did it?
To hold those.
To those work sessions?
No, I don't think it needs to be in a motion.
You did those, Stephen. You seconded it.
I know, but I wanted to make sure, since we changed everything, that I need to do it over or not.
No, I think you're fine.
Okay, just wanted to make sure that I didn't misstep. I knew I had approved it, but we added a few things. I wanted to make sure we were still all right. All right, anything else? Now I'll accept a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
We are adjourned. Thank you for coming. I don't know. I don't know how in the world you can come up with so much stuff to talk about.